It's nine o'clock and I will call to order the January 5th, 2021 virtual meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks? Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Okay, I would ask that everyone join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If everyone can make sure that their all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you're not speaking, so the remote listeners or observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I'd appreciate that very much. I would ask that Brad, our IT director, please instruct everyone on how they can access our meeting. Brad, if you would go ahead with that?
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Participants in the meeting, we would like for you to raise your hand when you would like to speak. If you, if you're running the Zoom client and you select the participants area of the screen along the bottom, you will see and you will see a raise hand function that shows up in the lower right-hand portion of your screen. That will indicate to the meeting host that you would like to speak. And then after that's done, I will ask you to unmute your microphone.
All right, thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move into the citizens input portion of our meeting, where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the, of the public that wish to address the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a hand raised. I will ask Mr. Cavaras to unmute.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'll be brief as possible. My name is Todd Cavaras.
Sir, we need you to, to state your name and address, please.
Okay, Todd Cavaras, 1221 South Woodward Road.
Thank you.
I am interested in the mile of Niles Road between K-4 and Tinkler Road. I've talked into the property owner about possibly buying 7702 South Niles. And it's my understanding that Gibson Valley Sporting Clays has been on the hook to, to maintain that road to, to whatever standards they could afford. If we moved down there, we'd be a primary residence for us, and I don't know if this is a time to bring it up or not, but we would be interested in knowing how, if the county would be willing to take that on, or if any kind of agreements the Gibson Valley had would be extended to us to, to maintain that, that mile of road.
Okay, Todd, I'm not in a position to answer all of those questions. I know there's a lot more to that, and you've stated it correctly. I would probably want to direct you to the Road and Bridge Department for the initial discussion to get that going. And, and there is, would be situations where we need to jump through some hoops to, to get that done, but you're correct on your assessment of that situation. But unless Phil, you know, something different, I would direct him towards the, the Road and Bridge Department initially, or should he come to you?
No, Road and Bridge would be a great place to start. I believe he may have already had a conversation with Darren at one point, but yeah.
Is, is that correct, Todd, that you've had your conversation with Road and Bridge?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, then we will, I'm sure they'll be bringing it before us so that we can get back to you with an accurate answer.
Understood, thank you.
So, all right, thank you for calling in. Are there any other citizens who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
All right, thank you. This time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to make any additions or deletions from today's consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We'll move into action items. Item number one, which is RFA 101-21, Resolution 21-2321, Proposed Road Vacation, Niles Road, with Jamie Doss, County Clerk. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Brad, can you put up the South Niles Road Vacation information today?
I really want to start out first, while he's pulling that up, is just kind of talk about what the county clerk's role in road vacations is. What we do is we take an application from a citizen that wants to request that a road be vacated. We then send them out to Terry Madison to get a legal description set up for that. And then we check to make sure with GIS, with the Registered Deeds, and, and everyone that the legal is, is accurate and acceptable. And then we present it to the commission for a study session and mail all of the adjacent landowners and owners information about the upcoming hearing. We do the publication as well as send the resolution over to Mike Montoya to make sure that everything is, is acceptable. And we check with utility companies and emergency responders. So today, what I'm presenting are three different road vacations, and the first one is the South Niles Road. It is a portion of road between Tinkler and Astoria. The petitioner is Michael Jensen, which leases the land there. And we have contacted all landowners, utilities. There was not an issue for those. The bridge structures, I see that there's a culvert that will need to be replaced, if not vacated, for Road and Bridge. And then it was sent to the county council for approval. Right now, the road is currently closed, and their cluster is requesting those needing access to his farm ground.
All right, thank you, Jamie. I think I can shed a little bit more light on this. I was, the petitioner, Michael Jensen, reached out to me yesterday, expressing an interest in, in not closing the road, if he could get some assurance from the county that we would fix or replace the culvert that is, that is crossing that road. And to me, that is the thing to do, is, is to replace that, so we can get the road back open rather than close the road. I mean, it is a straight-through mile. Actually, it's a couple of miles, I think, so. I guess I would ask that right now, that are there any commissioners who wish to, wish to speak? Or hopefully, we can go down that road and just avert all the, the, the tanglement that goes with this. Darren, are you available? Darren Fischel?
I am.
If we, if we go that direction, can we get an assurance from Road and Bridge Department that we would get to that crossing as quickly as possible to replace the culvert and get that road back into a functional through affair?
We have plans in place at the moment to repair the road should the vacation not occur.
Okay, at this time, I, I guess I'll open it up to, if, if there are any people, I, I would ask those that are in favor of, of the public that are in favor of vacating the road. In other words, closing the road. Is there anyone out there who is in favor of this motion? And therefore, raise your hand, please, if you are in favor of closing the road. Brad, do we have anybody that's raised their hand? Hello, Brad? Evidently not. I, I would, I would ask then if there are any, anyone else of the public that wishes to speak to the matter whatsoever, with the understanding right now, and I can't, I will open it back up to the commissioners before I do anything to make sure that this is exactly the direction we're going to take. But are there any members of the, of the public that wish to speak regarding potential road closure or keeping it open?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, at this time, and then I'd like to bring it back to the commission and for their feelings and.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, there is one person who has their hand raised.
Okay.
Mr. Supes. Go ahead and unmute, Mr. Supes.
All right, thank you. My wife is on also, Rita Supes. She didn't have a hand. There she is. We are landowners right along Niles, and we do appreciate your support to open that up and replace that culvert. That's a straight shot to our pasture and, you know, with fire trucks being able to get through there, and it, it's just a straight shot that's very much needed. We have a gate right there and an entry, and we have to go several miles around if that is closed. Rita, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I would just say the same thing. This, we are the, I'm the trustee of my father's trust, the Lyle Swisher Trust, and we own the property right to the south and to the east of Niles. And I agree that we would really like to keep that open if that culvert could be replaced at all. The other road is not very, it's impassable when it's muddy. Tinkler Road to the east, so it makes it very difficult to get in there if, if the roads are bad.
All right, thank both of you for, for those comments. I would also say that I have heard from Mrs. Olson, and I've also heard from Jay Everhart, who farms and grounds in that area, and they are supportive of opening the road and fixing the culvert. So with that in mind, I'm going to bring it back to the commission for consultation or possible action. Remember that the action before us is to close the road. So if, it's my understanding that if, we probably really won't even need a motion if we do nothing. It would, it would then just come back and we would, with the understanding that we're going to fix the road, so. At this time.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes, Roger Sparks here, and I would like to comment on the situation where being out there that the, many times is that that road, I, I would prefer to keep it open just to the matter of fact, is that just in the last couple of years where we had, went through the same situation there on that road, and we chose to keep it open at that time. And I just, I would like to see that culvert, even though we have a road closed signed up there right now, the road closed is that people are going around that and driving across that culvert now anyway. So I think it'd be safer to go ahead and keep the road open, replace the culvert, and, and put a little hitch on the road where to keep the water running somewhere instead of in the middle of the road. So that's, that'd be my comments on the situation.
I'd also like to comment that I traveled that road yesterday with Darren Fischel, our Road and Bridge Superintendent. And Darren does have a plan in place if we choose to keep the road open, to move dirt from, from up in the ditches and top of the hill and build the, the bottom up. And I think his plan included to putting in a steel culvert rather than a galvanized culvert, which is a much more structurally sound to be able to, to take care of the situation. Darren, am I, am I speaking correctly, or is there anything you want to add to that? You're, you're still muted, Darren.
We do plan on putting a steel culvert right there. That way, if, if it does get, it's a swamp area down in there, and when heavy loads go through there, that way it doesn't crush the culvert. So at least we won't have spent that money and, and got that culvert damaged.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like, again, I'll ask you, Phil, do, do we even need to take action if we, if we choose to keep the road open? I don't think we even need a motion, do we? Or would you rather cancel this motion? How do we want to handle that?
You're correct, Mr. Chair. There's no motion needed. The only motion would be to close the road.
Okay, that having been said, I will ask other commissioners if there's anyone who wants to close the road, why you can make a motion. If, if not, why, this will die, and we'll keep the road open and fix it.
Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of the direction we are headed, keeping the road open.
Thank you, Monty. Commissioner White, you have any comment or you feel the same way? You're muted, Mike. Commissioner Wees, are you there?
Yes, I think keep the road open.
Okay. At this time, it appears then that that is the way that we'll, the direction we'll take, and the road will not be closed, and we will instruct Road and Bridge Department to get to that just as quickly as their schedule allows and get the road fixed to, to where it's passable and to serve all the, the rural residents and farmland owners along that road. So thank all of you who came in and spoke to this matter. We appreciate it very much. That having been said, we'll move on to item number two, which is RFA 102-21, Resolution 21-2322, Proposed Road Vacation, Affrontage Road, with Jamie Doss, County Clerk. Jamie?
Good morning, again. Brad, can you pull up the South Frontage, or South 9th Street, the frontage road vacation map, please? This is a, a request from Stephen Dower for a portion of South 9th Street slash frontage road next to the Comerford Track addition. It was requested back on June 11th. We did an informational briefing on September 29th. Publication was done on December 13th. We have contacted all landowners, adjacent landowners, and utility companies, emergency responders. Road and Bridge said there was no bridge or structures in that section. And we did speak. Justin Mater and myself spoke with the city, and they're okay with closing this portion of the frontage road and okay it is on three entrances, shared entrances off of 81.
Okay, and we are talking about the area that is circled in red there, adjacent to Old 81. I traveled that area again yesterday myself. There actually is not even a road there. I believe it's just dedicated to be a road and to a frontage road, and there is no road there whatsoever. So for us to take action and, and vacate this road vacation, to me, seems like the, the right avenue to take on this one. So that, that having been said, are there any commissioners who wish to respond?
Commissioner Wees here. Question I have, when the city is acting for three shared entrances, Darren, what does that entail? And what are the costs on that, and who will incur those costs?
Commissioner Wees, this is Justin Mater. I'm probably a little more appropriate to answer that question. So with, what they'll do is really the first landowner that, that develops that property, so we've got, so I believe there's what, six, six tracks left in that development? So the first one to develop that property would be constructing that entrance there, and it would have to be a concrete entrance or an asphalt entrance, a hard surface. It, it can't be a gravel, gravel surface, because we're, we're, this is commercial, and so it would be for commercial use. And so the, the county, Sling County, would not have any costs associated with that.
Thank you, Justin.
Anyone else? I would ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission then for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2322 as presented.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Wees here, I second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 102-21, Resolution 21-2322, Proposed Road Vacation, Frontage Road. Is there any further discussion? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
And Commissioner White?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That does pass 5-0. Thanks, everyone who has contributed to that. We will move to item number three, which is RFA 103-21, Resolution 21-2323, Proposed Road Vacation, West Schilling Road, again with Jamie Doss, County Clerk. Jamie?
Thank you. Brad, can you pull up the West Schilling Road vacation map, please? This request was from Joel Weimer. The original request was back in June, or actually back in January, and then it was amended in June from what we presented you initially. So it's just a portion of West Schilling Road that was never improved. The requestor is asking for it to be closed to build a fence there. We have contacted all of the landowners, adjacent landowners, utility companies, and emergency responders. There's currently no bridges or structures in that section of, of the road.
All right, are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Wees here, a question for Justin, or Darren, whoever. A portion of the east side of Schilling will stay open as the zoom has to get access to the residents there on Schilling. But on the west side, my question is, is part of Schilling Road an actual drive empty? Any access of land there?
It is on the east side. On, on the west side, it's, it's basically someone's driveway. We do maintain the roadway on Schilling Road where it abuts Halsted Road, I believe it is. And we've talked with Mr. Weimer and Mrs. Gammidge about doing some upgrades and improvements to that end.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioners have questions or comments? I will ask that if, is there any public comment? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand at this time.
All right, seeing no one objecting to this, it seems to me like I will bring it back to the commission for possible action or more discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 21-2323 as presented.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 103-21, Resolution 21-2323, Proposed Road Vacation, West Schilling Road. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That motion does pass 5-0. Thank you, everyone, and thanks for the homework that we've done on this. We'll move on to item number four, RFA 104-21, CDBG-CV Award of Funds, with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator. Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This request for action is in regards to award of funds for a grant that we received back in July. back in July of 2020. In total, we received 132,000 in Community Development Block Grant coronavirus dollars that is to be used for economic development as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. Of that award, 120,000 was allocated for economic development and a total of 12,000 for grant administration. That was slated for with the partnership with the North Central Regional Planning Commission. The commission approved the grant and the approval for the North Central Planning Commission for the grant administration. And staff began the process of seeking applicants. The applicants had to be outside of the city limits of Salina. The city of Salina received their own CDBG grant dollars. So this was an exciting thing for the county to be able to offer to those businesses that were outside the city limits. We did receive a total of 13 applications and we assembled a committee at the direction of the commission that consisted of two county staff, two commissioners, and a citizen at large to review the application and to make a initial recommendation as far as grant award pending approval of expenditures and proof of payment before the applicants would be able to receive those grant dollars. So after we did that, the staff worked with the North Central Planning Commission to contact each one of the applicable applications that were received so that they could gather the information as far as all eligible expenses and proof of payment. The, once we did that and went through the verification procedure, the committee assembled again. And that's what the request before you today is for the consideration of awarding the, the committee's recommendations to the applicants. The applicants are as follows: Midwestern Sticker Shop with a final recommended award of 6,500; Central State's Industrial Services with a final recommended award of 20,000; Bell Tree Farm, recommended award of 40,000; Blue Barn Door, recommended award of 5,000; Olson Rentals, award of 2,500; Gypsum Flea Market, award of 2,500; Olson Financial Services, award of 2,500; Exit 14 Restaurant, award of 15,000; Gypsum Valley Lumix, an award of 6,000; Hubley Farms with an award of 3,000; K4 Garage with an award of 15,000, and The Spotlight for an award of 2,000. Your alternatives for action today are to approve the allocation of funding of the CDBG grant dollars as recommended by the committee. Or number two, make amendments to the allocation to each business as appropriate. Or number three, postpone any action for grant dollar allocation and provide staff with direction for further consideration for allocation. The recommendation from staff is to approve the allocation for each business as indicated by the request for action and the committee's recommendation. Several factors went into this particular process and were considered in order to provide this recommendation in front of you today. The things that we looked at required us to look at the requested amount from each business, the retention of employees, and the biggest part, verified expenditures and proof of payment. There is a specific list of eligible expenses: payroll, non-governmental owned utilities, rent, up to 60 days worth of inventory, and other monthly expenditures. All applicants that were recommended for award have provided their proof of all reimbursable expenses as well as their proof of payment to be eligible for this award. The budget impacts, again, the total award amount for Sling County was 132,000, with 120 that is allocated to be distributed, and then 12,000 for grant administration with the North Central Regional Planning Commission. There are no matching funds that are associated with this grant, and we will continue to do the necessary coordination with the North Central Planning Commission to get the distribution of these grant dollars out. So the other part of this particular grant is 50% of the grant refunds are required to be expended by February 1st of 2021, but 100% of the grant expenditures are required to be expended by August of 2021, so subject to any of your questions.
All right, are there any questions from commissioners or any comments from commissioners? I want to say thank you to the, to the committee for their prompt attention to this matter and getting these funds dispersed out into the county as quickly as possible. And every, every ounce of it, regardless of the size of the award, is helpful to the businesses, I'm sure. So at this time, as if there are no other comments from commissioners, I will ask that if there are any members of the public who wish to speak to this, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a hand raised. Mr. Olson, please unmute and proceed.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Olson. Please, please give your name and address, please.
Okay, yeah. Good morning. My name is Gary Olson, 7300 South Wetmore Road, Gypsum, Kansas.
You have a great deal of feedback coming through, Gary, so if you've got another radio on or something, please turn that off.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're having, okay, we should be good now. Do you hear me all right?
You're fine, thank you.
Okay. Do you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I tried to be very, very brief with my comments, and I do very, very much appreciate all the help that I've received, not only from the folks at the county there, but also the North Central Kansas Planning Commission. I guess I found out about the program by listening to the radio, and Hannah was promoting that on the radio, and I gave her a call to find out what was up with the program. After several conversations with Ms. Danbaugh, I think the process got to the point where she referred me to Carol at North Central Regional Planning Commission, who had worked with these programs for several years, and Carol is very, very knowledgeable on how to proceed. And at some point, the lady that did most of the work on this, Risa Reisinger, had her hand up, and I think it would be best just for me to go through what little I have here, and then she go through what she has. But Carol has since retired, and I have spoke with Becky a little bit on, on some of these processes. And we have learned exponentially a lot about North Central Regional Planning Commission through this process and what all that office can offer, not only for assistance on this grant, but also some other things that might help the Gypsum community. As the original deadline approached, in conversation with, I can't remember who, but with either Carol or Ms. Danbaugh, there was very few applicants in at that time. And I had a lot of concern about submitting so many applicants that involved my business enterprises in the Gypsum community. But I went ahead and submitted them because at that point in time, there was concerns about even having enough for $120,000. Furthermore, I guess I need to help answer the question of why there were so many applicants from the Gypsum area. Because I did work hand in hand with a couple individuals here and encouraged them to put their applications in. And I think some of them put them in right at the last minute, and a couple of those are being rewarded with a final committee recommendation of a pretty sizable amount of money. And so I'm obviously very enthused about that and very happy about that. I did find out also that, and I think I forgot this, that the Southeastern Sling Superintendent also spread the word. And Roger and I do work a lot with each other on trying to work on projects that will benefit the community. So with all that being said, I think I need to move into, I'm about half done with what I had to say. Am I okay, Mr. Vidrickson, or am I boring you?
Yeah, we need to get to a specific question here if you have one, Gary.
Well, I definitely have one, and I, I, I just trying to give you the background because I know that there were some comments that were made that why was there such a high number of applicants from the Gypsum community? And I just wanted to explain that to the commission that it wasn't, that's just how we got to this point. So with that being said, I do really want to thank you all for getting out and Hannah getting the information on how the funds were going to be dispersed because it was much better to have it so we could all look at it than to just get the information and not know what was going on. And so I did ask about the verifiable, verified eligible, eligible expense column. And I did look up this morning and where it says 3,000 plus, and do you all have that form? Do you know which form I'm talking about, Mr. Vidrickson and Hannah?
Yes, it's right in front of me.
Okay, so where it says $3,000 of verifiable expenses on Olson Rentals, we turned, we turned in $34,379. And we sat here for days wondering, you know, were they all verifiable? Where are we at? Never heard a word. On the next one, Olson, or the Gypsum Flea Market, we turned in 21,000 plus expenses, and we never heard anything about what was happening with that. But those two obviously cover the amount requested and would allow us to potentially have a pretty sizable amount of money potentially granted to us. Olson Financial Services, however, was only able to come up with $11,430 in expenses. And just wanted to put that out there, and we did request 13,000. Then finally, ATOP Realty has the dash through it, and I have had explained to me why ATOP Realty has a dash through it. And I just want to address that situation maybe very, very briefly. We did prove up about $34,000 of expenses, and we'd only asked for 10,000. The reason that ATOP Realty is probably struggling so much in Gypsum, Kansas is that today there's one house on the market and three buildings that are sitting empty, and nobody seems to want to bring business to Gypsum, Kansas. And with that said, a couple other things I want to point out is there have been several transactions that have occurred that have been without realtors. Yes, I've made some money on some transactions where I've done the paperwork, but those don't make five, $10,000 at a time. They make 250 to 750 dollars at a time. And so I think I have studied this, and I studied this, and I made spreadsheets. And we have piles of information here. This is one inch thick of information for the flea market that we verified up. This is the information we verified up for the rentals. This is the information we verified up for financial services. This is the information we verified up for ATOP Realty. And then I just want to point out that I think I'm fighting more for the Gypsum community than I am necessarily for myself because I think it's important that you all consider driving out to all the locations that your, your subcommittees agreed to give the money to. And, you know, when I pushed so hard to have the businesses up and down Main Street apply for these funds, not only was it just for the businesses that I'm involved in, it was for business survival. And I can assure you that if you drive by the restaurant and there's no cars there, and there's no cars there for days, they're going to be struggling, and I have no clue financially how they're doing. And so that is pretty much the end of my comments. I think I skipped a lot. I guess I'm asking the commission, I know there's some time, you have probably a window of 10 days, I think, from understanding, we're talking with staff, to reconsider this. I, I think that it's hurtful that one business was left off, and I think it's hurtful that some of these were funded at 100% and some of them were funded at 10 to 20% of the verifiable approved expenses. And so obviously, I'm asking, and I think I talked with you, Mr. Vidrickson, about this, that instead of saying verifiable expenses and just having some of them like exact numbers like 49,255 and 4,002 and 16,498, I would like to see that the subcommittee have a little bit more information. You paid $12,000 for the folks in Beloit to work on this. And with that, I think I should probably ask if you or anybody has any questions because I would love to try to answer them.
Well, I, I have, I have a couple of comments before I probably turn to Hannah. But when, your, your assessment of what is a verifiable eligible expense and what the guidelines that the committee had to go by are probably two different things. And I can assure you, the integrity of that, of that committee is beyond reproach. And they, they had the guidelines from the state that they had to work with. And when it says verifiable, obviously some of your expenses that you're, you're talking about obviously weren't, didn't meet those guidelines or they wouldn't have cut it, I, I don't think. I mean, I can't imagine that they would have. I mean, like I said, it's a, a very professional group that was, that was assigned to this with our two top people in our county community, along with two commissioners, along with a very distinguished person from the community of Salina who worked on the original dispersal of funds, and they worked diligently at this and they came up with the formula. And for me to micromanage as to why it doesn't say 18,750.26, I'm, I'm not going to do that. I mean, we've got auditors. We, this is going to be audited by the state. And if we don't, if we do something okay, some expenses that are, that are not verified, and then that person doesn't pay it back, the county's on the hook. I mean, they, they did their due diligence. So with that, just a second, Gary, let us finish here. With that, I will open it up to Hannah if she wishes to respond to some of your questions or, or, or what you might have about this. Hannah was the, was the chairman of this committee, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I guess the information in regards to this particular grant was, is a lot more stringent than the CRF funds that the county had received. This required the verification of expenditures, expenditures of certain things. Of that, it was, could be considered payroll, non-governmental owned utilities, rent, up to 60 days worth of inventory costs, and some other monthly expenditures such as any other type of phone bills, utilities such as that. So there was a lot that really went into being able to verify those expenses. And I do have Becky La Police from the North Central Planning Commission on the Zoom call as well. So they're kind of the resident level experts as, as it comes to this grant. One of the big lessons learned, because Sling County and the city of Salina were not the only communities in Kansas to receive this grant. The North Central Planning Commission actually took on a lot of grant administration when it came to this particular grant. And one of the biggest lessons we've learned was the verification of all expenses and showing proof of payment. So not only did you have to turn in a copy of your receipt of your bill, but you also had to turn in your bank statement to show that you already paid that bill. And so that's where it gets really complicated. And so the verification of expenses was a huge step in the process, and Becky did a fantastic job with going through that and communicating with me as to where we were at with certain things. So I think, yes, every single business turned in more expenses and more proof of payment than what they were even eligible to be able to receive through this grant dollar. Every business did. So we had to cut it off somewhere. We had to be able to go through with a fine tooth comb and really figure out what it was our committee initially was interested in being able to fund for the businesses. And we communicated that with Becky, and then she helped with going through the verifiable expenses. I hope that kind of answers some of the questions. It's just, it's really tough when there's, there's only $120,000 to go through and to be able to distribute and trying to make the best determination possible for allocation of those. Probably one of the other things that we really looked at on this committee was retention of employees. That is a very, very, very large requirement with this. This particular grant requires and focuses on retention of employees for, of low to moderate income. And every business had met that particular qualification. We had some businesses that retained more employees than others. And that was a particularly very high interest level of the committee itself when we were making these recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Olson, did you have something else you wanted to convey?
Oh, just a couple of things. First of all, we were, we have not been contacted since we turned in the four inches of paperwork to figure out how many verifiable expenses we had. And I would love to get Becky on the, on the phone or on the conference call, on the Zoom meeting, to maybe further explain this because I think she can make it pretty crystal clear what happened and the fact that the committee basically and the fact that the committee basically determined how much money they wanted to give to each business. And then the funds were verified up to that number. And I guess I don't really care that much. I'm happy that we are all getting money, Gypsum's getting money. But I think the thing that I'm disappointed in is that some of us worked really, really hard. And based on some comments I heard at a county commissioner meeting that I just, I planned to come to that one, but I came to the wrong one to try to get a lot of this out in the air before we got to this stage. And I apologize for not doing that. But I think the important thing that I'm asking for you all to do is to consider that the verifiable expenses, if you look at how much money people got based on verifiable expenses and you say, oh, wow, they got about what they want, you go down the list. Yeah, they got about what they wanted because they verified up the expenses in Beloit to the number that the final committee wanted to receive. And I just think that's a little bit backwards. I think the other thing in talking to Carol, the seasoned thirty year old lady that retired, she told me a lot about how a lot of other counties do this. And, you know, I totally understand that you all do a great job. You know, I commended you, Mr. Vitterson, yesterday for how well the county is running. I, you know, I really think the county is doing a great job. And I think that Risa needs to get her turn in here because she has questions. She wants me to ask, and I think she needs to ask him. So I think Risa has her hand up. I think I probably relate my concerns enough, this retention of employees. You know, I understand that. I understand that some businesses have went and hired employees that they never had. You know, there's all kinds of stuff that's going on that people are ready to throw each other in the bus because of questions. We have a lot of questions that we want to ask somebody, but we don't even know who to ask at this point. But you're right, it's going to be overseen by the government and we all want it done right. And I commend you for getting the money. And I guess my only question and concern is if there's another grant that comes out, is it going to be predetermined that we're just going to give the money to certain people?
Gary, I don't like that accusation at all that they've already figured out who they're going to give the money to or not give it to. That is ridiculous statement. That's not going to happen. These people are of a high degree of integrity and they didn't look at this and say, oh, this is Gypsum, Kansas, or this is Mr. Olson, and we're not going to give him as much. That did not even come close to happening. So unless you have a further question, and your specific questions to how this was arrived at, I think rather than address the commission, you should be addressing the committee. And that should be done in a separate setting.
I don't even know who the committee is.
Well, I'll tell you who the committee is, and you've been talking to him. Hannah Stanbaugh is the, and by the way, this committee was appointed by me with the approval of the county commission. It's Hannah Stanbaugh is the chairman. Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, who's the county administrator, was on the committee. Commissioner Jim Wies was on that committee. Commissioner Monty Shabwick was on that committee. And the citizen at large was Kristen Seaton Gunn. And I mean, that's your committee. And they all have telephone numbers or email addresses. And I'm sure can do a lot better job of answering your questions than I do because I haven't micromanaged exactly what they're doing with every dime or ten cents of it. It hasn't happened. And that's why we appoint that ad hoc committee to handle it. So.
Okay, well, with that, I do appreciate the opportunity to be included in this. And I will use the money very, very wisely that you do decide to grant. I think I'm just asking that you delay it a few days and I have a chance to talk to your committee, I guess.
Risa? I'm happy that you're going to get some funds, so thank you. And now we have, in your name, please?
Risa Reissinger.
Okay, and your address?
Seventy three hundred South Whitmore Road, Gypsum, Kansas. I'd just like to talk about our flea market a little bit. Our flea market, all of our inventory comes from our vendors and then we supplement some of our inventory.
Well, we're here to discuss this particular piece of paper, this RFA for handing out these funds.
That's what I'm getting to.
Okay, go ahead.
So our flea market has vendors that they supplement their social security income by selling things in our store. All the things that are sold in our store does not personally go to the owner of the store. He only gets a small percentage of the sales. With that being said, I guess I'm really disappointed that the flea market got such a small amount of money. We don't have very many businesses in Gypsum, Kansas. And I think we had, you know, more than twenty five hundred dollars worth of wages. I worked with Carol many times on phone calls determining what verifiable expenses were. And, you know, I don't, the time spent on gathering all this information was extensive. And then the first time that I filled out the, like, the sheet that just listed out the expenses, after I completed that, the form was changed and I had to completely redo it. So, you know, I guess I don't understand why our small businesses that are struggling in Kansas because of the COVID were awarded such a small amount of money.
Again, I will say that there is only so much money to be handed out. There are several different businesses here. If you'll look under the column of verifiable, verified eligible expenses in the Gypsum Flea Market, in the committee's determination had a little bit over three thousand dollars worth of actual verifiable expenses of which you received almost eighty five percent of that money that was verifiable.
Well, it's my understanding that many of the other businesses that received money were telephoned if someone had a question about verifiable expenses because I think I did a pretty good job verifying expenses. We were never called.
Well, I can't answer to that. I would assume if I were on a committee, you know, it's a responsibility of the business owner to submit the proper paperwork, I would think. I wasn't on that committee. I don't know anything about someone calling someone else back. I guess, Hannah, I could let you speak to that. I don't know. Ask for Becky to speak to all this.
Gary would like Becky to speak to all this.
I don't, who is Becky?
Mr. Chairman, so Becky is the employee from the North Central Planning Commission that was assigned to assist us with the grant administration. She could certainly speak if you would like her to. So just to provide you with some information, we did have a couple of businesses that we did have to do some clarification of some verified expenses to get the information necessary to verify it. That, I mean, yeah, there was phone calls. There was phone calls to several businesses just to make sure that we had the proper paperwork. And not only was it phone calls to get questions asked about verifiable expenses, it was also questions to make sure that what we had for proof of payment was correct, too. Those were the two things that had to happen. Verified receipt of whatever the expense was and then proof of the verified payment.
Again, I'm just going to say that I think we're using the wrong platform here to ask these questions. Those questions should be directed at the committee and not at the direct county commission. But I'm sorry, I'm giving you kind of the runaround here, but I don't know. Do we, is Becky on the line, Hannah? I mean.
Yes, Becky is on the Zoom meeting. If you would like for her to speak.
Becky, do you wish to speak to their question? Again, I mean, this really isn't a question and answer form, a platform, but go ahead.
Sure. I definitely thank you for the opportunity to allow you to speak. I really can't add much other than the fact that I agree with you, sir, that it definitely is a committee issue because on the North Central Kansas Regional Planning, North Central Regional Planning Commission and our job is to verify the recommended amounts from the committee is what we did. And so we verified those recommended amounts. Many of the businesses, all of them in fact, had verifiable expenses above those recommended limits. However, our guidelines were following the committee's recommendation. And once I was able to verify every single business that met those guidelines, sent that back to the committee for a final recommendation, which you have in front of you. So again, as what Hannah had said, that, you know, your actions here include the opportunity to change those, to have the committee revisit that or to approve. But again, I will, and I will say that, yes, there were additional verified verifiable expenses that those businesses did have. And if you choose to revisit that, I'm happy to go through and re-enter those as reimbursable expenses based on the recommendation of the committee.
I guess with that having been said, I mean, I'm not on the committee, so I will let that fall back on the committee themselves.
Mr. Chair, I am on the committee and we're not the federal government. We can't give out fake money. We only had so much money to give out. It was a tough decision. It is what it is. I'm not willing to continue to meet and I'm ready to make a motion whenever.
Commissioner Wies, did you have any echo, any other sentiments on this?
I will say, and correct me, Hannah, if I'm wrong, but I believe there's two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand total dollars that were requested in this grant process. And we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars available. That meant that there were people who were not happy with the amount they got one way or the other because there gets more money requested than money's available. So I worked the committee. We were diligent about it. Took the facts and made our best recommendation. And I, too, am ready for action and to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Olson, go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, though.
I guess I'm learning a lot. I did talk to at least two of the individuals on the committee and sent an email out to one county commissioner that I'd hope would respond to me. And you did, obviously. And I just still am asking that, I think, when this gets out to the public and the kickback in Gypsum was that, wow, the kickback in Gypsum basically was two individuals ended up with half the money. And there was twelve approved applicants. And that gets back to fairness, equality and questions in my mind. And so I guess I'm making one last plea. I gathered the gist of it. I'm sorry that I didn't know the people from the county commission and I didn't know the lady. Then I didn't call her, but I'm making one last plea that you give it another thought, another week. I'd still like to understand, I think I understand why ATOP really wasn't funded. But my God, I have spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a building in Gypsum to have a physical location in this community. And I think there's a lot of things that if you all would take the time in the next week to drive around and look at these businesses and see where their physical addresses are and see exactly who you're giving the money to, you might arrive at a different conclusion. And I think that, you know, Becky hit the nail on the head about she verified up the funds to the level that the subcommittee had asked for. And, you know, I've learned a lot and I really appreciate it. I very much appreciate the money that's come to Gypsum. I know that three or four of the businesses will be able to get down the trail of COVID nineteen problems a long way now. And, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Vitterson, you being patient. I have a tendency to ramble and you've been very, very fair with me today. And I do appreciate that. And I do want to say one more time that everybody that I've worked with, I appreciated the county administrator call yesterday morning or Monday morning at eight fifteen. Everybody has went over the top to try to be helpful with me. And I know I asked for something that was unattainable, the verifiable expense for my businesses because it would be unneeded work. And, you know, I still struggle to know exactly why it was decided that, especially the flea market, you know, and if I had to do all over again, I probably would have just applied for the flea market. And I feel like if I would have done that, it would have had a different outcome. And so with that in mind.
We need to shut you off, but I would disagree with that because the flea market only had three thousand dollars worth of verifiable expenses. I'll get back to that point.
That's not, the problem is you only verified up to the amount you wanted to give us.
Gary, I'm not going to discuss that any further with you because I don't agree with that. I mean, and I can't speak for the committee, so I can't.
As I, sir, as I understand it, that the businesses exceeded, all businesses exceeded verifiable expenses. There was only so much money to pass out. You know, we didn't only have three thousand dollars of verifiable expenses submitted.
We submitted twenty one thousand.
Hang on a second. Hannah, would you please unmute yourself? Am I correct in, when I read in your column of verifiable, verified eligible expenses and we'll use Olson Financial Services, the column says three thousand dollars plus? Now, does that mean that that plus could be clear up to their eighteen thousand dollars that they said they had? Or is it just barely at the three thousand? How does that work?
So that is correct. The aspect of the plus sign means that they had more than what was recommended by the committee in eligible expenses. But again, the job of the North Central Planning Commission was to verify the expenses up to the amount that the committee was recommending. And again, every single business had more verified expenses than what the committee was looking at awarding them.
So I'm wrong by saying that his three thousand dollars plus is actually, could be as high as eighteen thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct. But every single business, every single, yes, every single business. And if you look at the actual, the request for action, every single business has a plus sign next to it as far as verified expenditures because every single business had more.
Then with that, I apologize to Mr. Olson and his businesses for incorrectly stating what that column really meant. I was not privy to that. I didn't understand.
We turned in about seventy five thousand dollars of expenses in our four businesses. So if the verifiable expenses were in there for every business, it would be a lot of work. But you all give twelve thousand dollars. That's what I'm asking for you all to do is to go back to the drawing board and have the people in Beloit come up with better numbers that are more representative of the fact. I wouldn't even be having this conversation at all. I asked four days ago for a verifiable expense number. And I've asked four different people for that number.
And who were those four people? Who were those four people?
Hannah, Philip, Becky, and you and Mike White, if I remember correctly. And nobody can come up with a number. Only person that can come up with a number is Becky. And Becky didn't do that because she only had to come up with a number that was big enough for the recommended award, a grant number. And so that's why I'm so frustrated that I have thirty four thousand, twenty one thousand, eleven thousand and thirty four thousand.
Okay, Gary, we do need to bring this to a conclusion here. You have made your message very, very, very clear. And the committee is all hearing this and the commissioners are all hearing this. And it is time for us to, and I understand your position. I totally do. But we need to, we know that you've worked hard down there. We know that Gypsum is needing the money. And I'm happy that so much of this money is going to Gypsum in my district. I'm very happy with that with the community. So, but I do need to bring this back to the commission and we do need to make some sort of a draw to a conclusion. So.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the allocation of funding as recommended.
Is there a second?
Let's get that motion.
Let's get that motion.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that uh we approve the allocation of funding as recommended for RFA one oh four dash twenty-one. Uh, is there any other discussion from commissioners? I will call for a roll call vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson is aye. Uh, that motion does pass five zero. And we thank everyone for their efforts in this and we thank the public uh participation. Uh, I probably should have asked if there were any other public members that were wanting to speak, but I don't see anybody's name on there that would not be in this category. So we will move to item number five. Uh, our, excuse me?
Commissioner Wees, sir, could we get a two-minute recess?
Uh, how much?
Two.
Uh, let's go to ten ten. We will, we will uh uh, we will recess the meeting until ten ten.
Thank you, sir.
It's ten ten, and I will call to order uh re to reconvene the meeting with Sling County Board of Commissioners. And we will move to item number five, which was uh RFA one oh five dash twenty-one bid award for culvert replacement with Justin Mater, county engineer. Good morning, Justin.
Morning, commissioners. Well, I'm I'm here this morning to discuss and take appropriate action on a Sling County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for culvert replacement projects. Sealed bids were opened on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty at eleven thirty, and we received two bids. Uh, you should have a copy of the bid tabs in front of you with uh all the the details, the specific details of the bid. So there were ten projects that were selected in Seline County on asphalt surface roads that had a crossroad culvert in poor condition. So each of these projects replaces the pipe culvert uh with a minimal amount of roadway disturbance. Uh, two alternative pipe types were bid at each location. So alternate one utilizes a polymer coated galvanized pipe while alternate two utilizes an aluminum coated pipe. So you should have um also in front of you a um, oh, the tile sheet that shows all the project locations as well. So for the alternatives for action, uh to accept the low bid from T and R Dirt for alternate one, which is uh the polymer coated pipe. Alternate two would be to accept a low bid from T and R Dirt for the um alternate two, which uses the aluminized pipe. Uh, alternate three would be to reject the low bid and accept the bid from Smoky Hill Construction. And then the fourth alternative would be to reject all bids. Staff recommends to accept the unit prices with alternate one, which is the polymer coated pipe submitted by T and R Dirt for all ten project locations for the amount of total estimated work equal to two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Based on a twenty-twelve field study uh completed by the National Corrugated Steel Pipe Association, polymer coated pipe will add an additional fifty to eighty years of life compared to a conventional galvanized pipe. Um, and I would conservatively suggest that the polymer uh coated pipe would add about an additional thirty to sixty years uh compared to the aluminized pipe. Uh, the additional thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars uh for the aluminized coated pipe is uh well worth the added years of service life. All projects will have a combined cost of estimated work equal to two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Funds for these projects will be taken from the account one twenty-five, which is our special bridge construction fund. Um, and this count has a current balance of two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Is there any questions?
Questions from commissioners, comments? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak for this matter?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised.
All right, this time I'll bring that back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for project twenty dash fifty-four oh four, alternative one and alternative two to T and R Dirt as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one oh five dash twenty-one bid award for culvert replacement. And with that, I will call for a roll call. Uh, Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That motion does cast pass five two zero. Uh, Justin, thank you for your work on this and uh we'll get that going. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, commissioners.
We'll move to item number six, RFA uh one oh six dash twenty-one, Seline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave with Marilyn Lemur, our human uh resources director. Good morning, Marilyn.
Good morning, commissioners. Now, this request, uh, given you a little bit of history first, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, or the FFCRA, it mandated emergency paid sick leave for up to eighty hours for full-time employees and a prorated amount for part-time bearable hour employees that are quarantined, isolated, or seeking diagnosis that cannot telework. It also provided expanded family and medical leave for those affected by school and daycare closures. The FFCRA applied to private employers up to five hundred employees and then all public employers. The FFCRA mandate for public and private employers ended at the end of the year, uh, twelve thirty-one twenty. The most recent COVID-19 relief bill was signed into law on twelve twenty-seven, twenty twenty that provides employers can voluntarily offer paid sick leave and family leave to their employees. The bill extends the tax credit through March twenty twenty-one for private employers that continue to offer a paid sick leave and family leave to their employees. Public employers do not have this dollar-for-dollar relief like eligible private employers. We've had approximately a third of our employees that have benefited with the emergency paid sick leave at varied levels without having to use for their own uh paid sick leave accounts due to the FFCRA. Um, some have used the full eighty hours that they were eligible for with other ones not using any or maybe just using some portion of their eligible hours. So as a bridge to normalcy, um, the Sline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Plan that we are proposing has two elements with pro, both of those provided out of the generosity of the Board of County Commissioners should they approve. We recognize that a vaccine will not be available to all employees or the general public until further into twenty twenty-one. And we want to encourage employees to stay home if they are sick and not risk exposure to others. So there are two elements to it. Um, we are um recommending that we do not extend the FFCRA but provide a Seline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Plan in combination with the FFCRA to a combined eighty hours. The FFCRA ran from April first to the end of twenty twenty, and the Seline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Plan would run from January one twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty-one. The Slink County Emergency Paid Sick Leave does not reset with an additional eighty hours if an employee has already exhausted all or part of their FFCRA emergency paid sick leave. The second element of that is to continue the advanced paid leave option that the commission did approve um on March twenty-fourth before the FFCRA took effect on April first. And it allowed for granting advanced leave as a result of COVID-19. And then employees, if they requested that advanced leave, they would pay back that with future earned leave. Uh, this would be for employees that have exhausted their eighty hours of combined FFCRA and um the Sline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave if you approve that as a result of COVID-19. So the alternatives for action is to approve this plan with those two elements to provide a Seline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Plan to June thirtieth of twenty-one and offer advanced paid leave to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, should an employee request that. Option two would be do not approve the plan, or option three is direct staff to come back with a different plan. The staff recommendation is to approve the plan to provide Sline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave to June thirtieth and offer advanced paid leave to those that request it through June thirtieth of twenty-one. And I'm available for questions.
Marilyn, uh, obviously, we don't know how many people are gonna get sick, if any at all. Hopefully, it'd be nobody, but uh doesn't seem to be what's gonna happen. But it says, uh, under your budget impact, no additional funds above what has already been budgeted for twenty twenty-one salaries. Uh, I guess I'm not quite following that. I mean, so uh well, I I mean, maybe I am now that I think about it. Um, they, the money would just be as like vacation pay, so to speak. I mean, it's already budgeted there. It's in their salary. And it just so happens if they happen to be in quarantine, then we're still gonna pay them. We're just, you know, it's not gonna cost the county more money. It'll be just lost, loss of time spent at the job. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, other commissioners, questions or comments? As an RFA is in place, I would uh ask if there's any members of the public who wish to speak.
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
All right, this time, then I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the plan to provide Sline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave as presented by staff.
I will second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one oh six dash twenty-one, Sline County Emergency Paid Sick Leave. Any other comments or questions? I will call for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson, aye. Motion does pass five zero. Marilyn, thank you for uh your work on this.
Thank you, commissioners.
We'll move to item number seven, which is a review of amendment number one to resolution twenty dash twenty-two ninety-seven, review of section six max mask mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director. Good morning, Jason.
Morning, commissioners. Mr. Chairman. Uh, Brad, if you can pull up that presentation. All right, so in accordance with our uh our schedule, this is the mask update or COVID-19 update for January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. So since our last update two weeks ago, um, we've actually seen, even though there continues to be more cases and more deaths, it seems to be a uh little bit lower trend in that total number. Uh, last, last time we were reporting over three million cases in a two-week period. Uh, this year it's just, or this uh this time period is a little under three million uh new cases. Next slide, please. For the state of Kansas, um, again, kind of seeing that same um trend over the last couple of weeks. Uh, twenty-six thousand plus new cases, um, an additional four hundred and forty-nine deaths across the state. Um, and then, of course, an additional fifty-one thousand negative tests um through a lot of the uh testing that went on across the state um in the last month. Next slide. In Seline County, we are up to four thousand, four hundred and eighty cases as of yesterday total. Um, twenty-six hundred plus have recovered. We still have a lot that we are following. Um, and twelve additional deaths in the two-week period, which brings our total um as of, oops, that should be as of one four twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry, not twelve twenty-one. I'll correct that before we post this. Um, but that brings us up to sixty-nine uh COVID deaths for the year. Hospitalizations are still holding in between thirties and forties um in their their COVID patients. Next slide. All right. We're getting kind of to the point, so I started adding in the numbers, so it's a little bit easier to be able to compare month to month. Um, of course, still seeing a significant increase in cases in the month of December from November. Um, I don't have a percentage breakdown yet of all of the free testing and how many tests were conducted and how many were positive. Um, hopefully be able to compile that data here pretty soon. Um, but the the spread is still happening. Um, I think the the free testing probably helped identify quite a few asymptomatic positives who didn't know that they were carrying it and maybe potentially kept them from transmitting it to others over the holidays. Uh, but we still won't know the full extent of any type of um holiday exposure from that time period, you know, right before Christmas till after New Year's here for at least another uh week to ten days. Next slide. And you can see December has been our worst um so far in the pandemic when it comes to deaths in the county. And those are all Seline County residents, not just deaths that occurred in the county of somebody that lives somewhere else. These are all residents in our county here. A lot of them are from nursing homes, but still, you know, that's somebody's family member that is, has been dealing with that, and that's a lot for. Not only healthcare, hospital personnel and ICUs, but nursing home personnel who, you know, having to. Having to deal with these events and having to deal with COVID in, in these facilities. And then also just kind of that, that next step of some strain that it has put on the. Mortuary services in the area trying to process all of those deaths. Next slide. So we still have a lot of clusters. We have a couple more long-term care, another private business. Again, just keep in mind that these will stay on there until twenty-eight days have passed without a new case related to spread at that cluster. Next slide. Testing, originally, the testing for the free testing sites across the state that were occurring in December was supposed to end at the end of December. But because of extensions of some of the CRF, KDHE has extended that until the end of January. Currently, right now, Well Health, who has been offering testing at the Church of the Cross, has, has, has some other dates available. For somebody who wants to get tested through that, if they go to that website, gogettested.com backslash Kansas. They'll be able to see where the site is, be able to book their, their time for the test and see when those events are occurring. There may be other events. Dr. Kraft is on from Salina Family Healthcare as well. Dr. Kraft, did you want to mention anything about potential testing that you might have coming up? Or is that still early?
We have a planning meeting this afternoon with a group of. A, a group that has interest in doing a similar mass testing, testing event in the North Salina area, so. Initial discussions are underway for that.
And so, once they have that finalized, we will help assist with pushing that information out to the public through. Our social media and our mass media and help get that out there. Next slide, please. This is the one that you probably all want to hear about. And Dr. Kraft, I'm just going to kind of go over a few bullets and then we can both hop into this. Vaccines are being given across the county. We are well up over a thousand that we have, have been given so far. Right now, the Health Department, Salina Family Healthcare and Salina Regional are the, the vaccinating. Site, not sites, but we are having to lead vaccination here in the county and working together to make that happen. Dr. Kraft has been kind enough to be on with us right now to help with either adding to or answering any questions right now about vaccines and vaccination. Dr. Freelove did had to leave or did have to leave, so he is not available right now. One feature that we started last week trying to get information out to the public is starting a Tuesday and Thursday vaccine updates. On the off days from our press releases. And anybody that's interested in those, they can click on that link and sign up. As well as those, those updates are on our social media as well. Me, next slide, please. Also. KDHE right now is using a five-phase approach to vaccinating the state. A lot of the questions that we get is, as different priority groups, when will we be able to get vaccinated? And right now, KDHE and all the counties are in phase one, which is healthcare workers, nursing home residents and staff and EMS. And that is supposed to or expected to last through January. The who and when of those phases two through five have not yet been determined by the state. Dr. Kraft, Dr. Freelove, myself and our staffs have been meeting now regularly here in the last couple of weeks. To try and compare the information that we have been getting from the state as far as vaccinations. And the, the how-tos and the wheres and responsibilities. As well as trying to fill in those blanks that are those gaps of information from the state. Dr. Kraft. What would you like to add at this point?
I, I guess I would add just a few little details to give you some sense of where we're at. Again, we've kind of been helping provide some logistical support to identify who the healthcare workers are. In our area outside of the Health Department, our facility and the hospital. There, a rough estimate of the medical providers. That would have contact with COVID patients would be approximately twelve hundred total people and based on the supply that we have. Currently in the county that would roughly hit about a third of them, so we still have. A significant way to go in getting all of the healthcare workers vaccinated. At Salina Family, we're getting rid of our supply today and tomorrow, so we're going out and vaccinating people. Off of the list and we're marking them off as we go and. I think Jason would agree that the, one of the biggest questions is, are we, when and how much extra supply are we going to get for the vaccine? We have no idea, so it just kind of shows up and we. I, I think we currently have a good, solid plan to, to administer it when it shows up, but. That's the big question is how much and when?
Right, so it, it has been a, a challenge. We have both, I think, asked to the state trying to get better clarification. And I'm not sure if it's an issue of they don't know right at this moment, which I think is probably part of it. And a lot of it, I think, too, is once they get it and then we have some last-minute reaction that we have to do to try and then. Make those arrangements. We also have staff working on. Vaccinating some of EMS, we'll be working on some other. Healthcare workers throughout the week for some of the other smaller agencies, just trying to. Get as many as we can with what we have and then as we get more vaccine. Continue to coordinate between our agencies to contact those agencies scheduled and get their healthcare providers, the healthcare workers taken care of. Nursing home residents and staff, their vaccine is supposed to be coming through the National Pharmacy. Program through CVS Walgreens. I haven't heard any significant issues yet, but I also haven't heard any significant achievements in, in. That part yet either, so I think there's still challenges logistically that are being worked out there. While I still have Dr. Kraft on the line, are there any questions from Commissioners? Oh, I guess probably one other thing I should add before I do that. One of the challenges that we have with the vaccines too and, and. Is that the way that this comes packaged, it's not like flu shots that we got in the fall where they're individually packaged, they're refrigerated. You know, somebody can just basically come in at any time and, you know, we just pull one out and give it to them. These come in multi-dose vials that are frozen, that once they're thawed. A clock starts and they're only good for a certain period of time after they are thawed. And then additionally, once you pierce the seal on that to draw out that first dose out of that ten-dose vial. That starts a second clock that's about six hours long when those ten doses in that vial have to be used. So that creates an additional challenge of making sure that we have people lined up. Or that we have, you know, readily quickly be able to contact people when, say, we finish up a vial maybe that has eight doses and we have two left. And we've got to find, you know, two additional healthcare workers or somebody to put that into so that we don't waste any doses. This vaccine also has a lot of stringent storage requirements and. Accountability requirements as well. That create additional challenges, you know, from normal vaccines we've had in the past. Chairman, it sounded, it looked like you had a question?
Well, I, it, it's probably the cart before the horse, but, you know, again, not compares to Sedgwick County. You know, where they're using interest Bank Arena to administer, you know, have people lined up for miles. If and when we get enough, do, do we have a plan? I mean, where we're going to administer this, obviously. Saline County Health Department doesn't have the parking to take care of that type of a situation, nor does Dr. Kraft's facility. Are we going to use multiple places? Or I assume that you're talking about those types of things.
Yes, sir. So part of our weekly meetings now also includes how we are going to try and. Especially now that some of the challenges that we know, which includes a, where you have to closely monitor them for fifteen minutes after they get the vaccination. There's some additional documentation stuff with filling out the vaccine card so that they know when their second dose is. And I think those have added additional steps in that. From our normal mass vaccination process. And then some of what we've discussed too is that in the past. I don't think it was, and this is, I, I think, you know, across all of our, our plans for several years, it really wasn't taken, I think, into consideration for. Mass vaccination that most of the people that were going to have to do it originally were already going to be well inundated with. Dealing with patients and, you know, overflowing hospitals and case investigations, so. We'll be looking at all of the others who can be able to help. And be able to give all of, you know, give this vaccination to the general public in a, a. In a timely manner, once as, as we get more. The hard part is trying to predict when that might be. So we're kind of planning in a vacuum without having any kind of timeframe of when that's going to be.
My other is just a comment, and I think the last time that we met, I asked you if we'd had any documentation of people that are getting it multiple times. And I, I just want to say that I was in a professional office yesterday where the receptionist. Relayed to me that she had had it twice. And of course, I immediately questioned her, was she tested or whatever, and she says she was tested and did positively have COVID. Like a hundred and twenty days apart, so I guess my, my message is to the public. Because I've seen people doing this when they walk in somewhere. I don't have a mask on because I've already had it. I can't give it out. Well. This person was a hundred and twenty days in between receiving, you know, the first time they had the COVID and the second time. So people need to be cognizant of, just because you've had it doesn't mean you can't get it again or, or, or convey it to someone else, so be vigilant.
Correct.
So other comments from Commissioners, questions for Jason or Dr. Kraft?
Commissioner Lee's here. Jason and I have a question. The first thing, if I have a number right. There's twelve hundred people identified as eligible. And was, was I correct in hearing that we have one thousand vaccines available in Saline County? And that three hundred have been administered, is that correct?
No. Go ahead, Dr. Kraft.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll clarify that. The, the twelve hundred number is, does not include hospital. Saline County Health Department or Salina Family employees. So that, and I don't, I don't know what that number is, so the number, the total number of healthcare workers is going to be greater than. Twelve hundred by whatever that would add on. But out of, out of that twelve hundred. We have supply to be able to do about a, a fourth to a third. Of those, of that twelve hundred.
Okay, how many vaccines have been administered so far in Saline County?
So I know the hospital received approximately nine hundred of the Pfizer vaccine. That was entirely used. We at Salina Family received three hundred. So far, at the end of today, we will have administered at least two hundred of those with the plan of using the other one hundred tomorrow. So, and I don't know at the Health Department how much you have received or.
We received two hundred doses of the Moderna and. Started giving it out on Thursday with EMS and we've done about thirty, I think, at this point. But like I said, we have scheduled with some of these smaller providers this week that. So that supply that we have will be exhausted here in the next couple of days.
And it's my understanding that the hospital also received some of the Moderna vaccine and they are going through some of their other employees as well. I think I remember the number three hundred, but don't hold me to that for their supply. So that would be approximately fifteen hundred total doses to the county if you add up everything.
And right now, working on trying to have some sort of reporting that we can be able to show out there for, you know, how many doses have been given. Because it's going to be quite a while before we can expect, you know, the state to have any kind of comprehensive information, I think, as far as. Doses given, and we want to be able to show how it's progressing here in the county.
Okay, and, and one other question that you asked of me, you know, I'll pass it on is. How did, how does the state decide how to allocate resources amongst the county?
That's a good question. They have a committee. Working at the state and it has some kind of funky acronym as well that is meeting and trying to determine those phases. And exactly how they, like right now, how they are determining, say, that Saline County gets. I don't know, five hundred doses versus the next county gets two hundred. Their math, their formula, I'm not sure about that. That's not something that they've really shared on how they are allocating doses to counties.
All right, other questions from other Commissioners or comments? If not, Dr. Kraft, thank you for, for coming on and, and helping Jason and helping the, the rest of us understand what's, what's going on or not going on. So. It, it falls back on the state, in my opinion. I mean, we're just not getting the information that we need to be able to communicate with our residents and our, our, the people in Saline County to. Give them accurate information. It just leaves everybody in the dark, so to speak, so. But thank you both for your efforts and your staffs. Thank you.
All right, I've got a, well, there's a couple more things there. On the presentation. All right, Brad, if you can go to the next slide. One thing I just wanted to highlight real quick, you know, is that. Our media relations person that we have contracted with has been doing a great job in trying to put things together to get out to the community. And this is one of, one of the things that she has started doing the last couple of weeks is the hashtag Show Your Mask Monday. So if you go on Facebook and check it out, there's a lot of people getting involved, the showing, you know. Pictures of themselves, selfies, you know, wearing their mask and, and we're trying to do a lot to bring the face to, you know, COVID in the community and not just. Always talking about the numbers, but really trying to put a, a face to it. And then the last slide. So continuing the mask order, of course. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the current mass gathering health order is supposed to expire at the end of this week. And after consulting with the COVID planning partners from the hospital, Salina Family, EMS, the city. I plan to extend that current health order for fifteen days. Partially as we are still seeing the numbers not looking good. But also to take us through that post-Christmas, New Year's holiday potential surge. Of cases there that is expected to happen. I'm hoping that people, you know, here followed all the recommendations, so we don't see that. But that will just be extended for fifteen days and then we will reevaluate the situation.
Will that come before the commission or is that something that just, that happens through the Health Department totally?
So I can probably take that, Mr. Chair. So according to House Bill twenty sixteen. The County Commission may review, amend or revoke the order. uh, the county commission may review, amend or revoke the order. So, um, once Jason has, uh, an order for you to look at, we can discuss whether there's interest on the part of the commission to put that on for next Tuesday or schedule a special meeting. Um, but you do not have to do that. I don't think Jason plans to make any substantive changes to what he's got out there right now.
Well, I for one, uh, would just assume he handled it then because I, there's certainly not going to be enough time there for me to say, I want to do away with, uh, any part of that mass gathering. So let's, uh, some other commissioners object, uh, we'll let the health department handle that.
I'm in agreement with you, Bob.
So proceed, Jason.
Thank you, sir. And that will conclude my, my presentation and my comments for this morning.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry to cut you off there a second ago, but, uh, you're getting everything done and, and, uh, convey our thanks from the commission to the, to your staff and, and all the hard work that, that they're going through too. So.
Will do, sir. Thank you all.
All right, uh, lengthy meeting today. Well, we're done with our, our voting, uh, items and we'll move into informational items, uh, item number one is our Roden Bridge Department update, uh, with Darren Fishel, Roden Bridge, uh, Director. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, this is our, uh, quite, well, w- once every two month, uh, update. I've included a few, uh, ear-in numbers in some of it. Um, Brad's got some slides if he could start that, please. This slide right here is a really a commendation to our employees. Um, it's a sign we have out here at Roden Bridge and it says 1,447 workdays without a lost time accident. We did complete 2020 with no lost time injuries to employees. Uh, the previous record was 538 days and that constitutes four years. Uh, want to really give our employees a, a pat on the back for that. To do that requires a safety culture. And a safety culture requires everybody to think safety first, how we're going to do this safely and plan their activities. So the, the folks really around here, I have taken that, that seriously. Um, we did set up and retrieve voting booths for the November elections. Um, next slide, slide please. These are two new dump trucks that we took possession of, approved by the commission along with the, the two new, uh, truck driver positions that we are currently advertising for. Uh, we received them at the end of December. We had two snow and ice events in December. Um, we replaced, uh, about 16 entrance culverts. Um, next slide, please. This is at Stimel and Amos. There was a crossroad culvert that had failed, uh, was non-functioning. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a portion of an earth road near south of Magnolia that did not have a culvert in it. Um, we went ahead and rebuilt the road and, and added a culvert to keep this from happening during every rain event. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is the same here. There was no culvert here. This is on, uh, uh, Honig Road north of Waterwell. Uh, we went in there and we built the road up with the existing material that was available and added a culvert. Next slide, please. Uh, next slide, please. This is an entrance culvert at Kip Road just north of Rose Hill. Uh, there's a culvert very short in there. It failed. The, the owner provided a length of culvert and we put a little longer one and did some ditch clean to the south. Next slide, please. Next slide. This is on Smullen Road just west of Centennial, uh, another failed culvert that we replaced. Next slide. Next slide. This is a failed box entrance at, on Ottawa Road, just, uh, west of Simpson Road. This is, um, hollow core, uh, pre, pre-stressed concrete that was put on a, on a back wall, oh, probably back in the, in the mid eighties or so. These, uh, the back wall had started to fail and these were cracking. Um, to build a box here, you're looking at $40,000 or $50,000. But, um, there is a company called The Railroad Yard. Next slide, please. That makes these, these tank cars. These are old oil tank cars. They're cut in half and these have a s- a steel bottom. And then they, they sell these and, and they're approximately about $10,000. So we were able to save some money there, uh, by installing this entrance. This is an earth road, so, uh, not a lot of need to spend a bunch of money there. Um, it, it just provides access to the farmer to his field. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please. And then we did do some ditch work, uh, with that project also. This is another failed box. Um, uh, on Pleasant Hill, just, uh, west of Gerard. It had also started failing down here. If you look at the ditch line, and the narrowness of the driveway, the tank cars only come in 30-foot long sections. So this, this property owner here did not want any of his trees removed. So we, we came up with the alternative of some Lego blocks. Next slide, please. Uh, this is, this is also within, um, that 10 to $12,000 cost range to install one of these. But we purchased these Lego blocks from the local concrete supplier. Um, next slide, please. And then we installed these beams that we bought from Purple Wave off of there a few years ago and placed those on top of there along with some bridge decking. Next slide, please. And then there was some ditch cleaning on that also. Next slide. And then we also, uh, began our winter tree trimming, uh, next slide. This is a Crawford and, and, or no, I'm sorry, Halsted and State Street. Um, this is where we, uh, this time of year, we start cleaner in lines of intersections. Next slide, please. Removing little trees, uh, and, and cleaning the, the ends of the box out. Next slide, please. This is Simpson Road. Um, the overgrowth from the hedge trees here, uh, were coming out onto the road. The winter is the time, the time to do this because, because of the cold, these break off easily. Um, and there's no leaves on the trees. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is on State Street. Um, if you'll notice this group of trees down here in these OM3 markers, there's a box there. Uh, so because of the, uh, the moisture that usually retained in the drainage areas, you get these trees that'll grow up in there and, and those root system causes problems for the structure. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is Pleasant Hill, uh, just east of McGovern. You get some half-dead tall, uh, cottonwood trees here. And, um, when, this is the, uh, north side right here. So when you get a heavy south wind in that 30 to 40 mile range, uh, most generally one of these will fall down in the middle of the night or during the day and, and create traffic hazards. Um, next slide, please. So the property owner, he, he did want to build a new fence through there. It is part of his cattle feeding operation. So we agreed to remove those trees. Um, and he provided the, the place to stack them and they'll be burnt at a later date. Next slide. That's the end of my, uh, uh, picture presentation. We did, uh, repair and replace 271 signs or posts. We hauled 2,670 ton of rock, 1,190 ton of AB3, 1,455 ton of sand, 570 ton of dirt and 280 tons of salt during those two months. We've got some yearly aggregate totals. Um, over the year, we hauled 60,581 ton of road rock, 24,260 ton of sand and 14,371 ton of AB3. And that dollar wise, that's approximately, uh, 1.5 million. Just so you can kind of get an idea of what, what those costs are for the aggregates. And we, our plans, we're working on, uh, plans for next year. We plan to rebuild three to five miles of roadway. Most of that being in the Simpson, south of Waterwell area and Thatcher Road between, uh, Ohio Street and Crystal Springs. We're doing our winter tree work and vegetation control projects. Um, we have access for a borrow pit. We're going to start pushing some dirt out, building a pond for a property owner to get some dirt to, uh, put a shoulder edge wedge on Brookville Road, uh, from Brookville to the Salina County line. And we are currently replacing the deck on a box culvert on Centennial Road that has been closed for over a year or so. It was, uh, damaged by some heavy loads. Um, our budget update is that we did not exceed our 2020 budget.
All right, Darren, thanks a lot. Uh, quite a bit of work going on there. I, I want to comment that, uh, the pictures go a long way when we see what it looked like the before and after. Um, I mean, it's like taking a totally wrecked car and, and totally making it into a new car. It, they really look good and it's a good way to, to expose the Roden Ri- Bridge Department to us as the commissioners and the general public. Um, I would also, based on everything that we've done today, earlier in the, in the meeting today, that you will expedite that, that Niles Road portion that we talked about and getting that culvert in there.
Uh, I've already sent Justin an email for, uh, thickness wall for the pipe. And so, uh, talked to Ted this morning and he was going to get located started. So as soon as we can get the materials and people in place, we will have that completed.
That goes a long way for, for the Roden Bridge Department and the commission both that, that shows the public, uh, you know, when we say we're going to do something, that we'll get right on and do it. So thank you very much. Also want to comment, uh, the picture that I saw early in your presentation, were those the new dump trucks that we bought here a while back? They look like new ones?
Yes, they were.
All right. Uh, other commissioners have comments or, or questions from Darren or for Darren? Okay. Well, appreciated very much, Darren. Thanks for, job well done.
You know, I, I would ask that, uh, anybody that has any questions or concern, uh, with Niles Road, um, I'll be speaking with Mr. Pavoris. And, um, if, if you need any more information, please contact me.
Okay. Thank you very much. We, we'd appreciate you taking care of that too. All right. We'll move on to item number two, which is our county administrators update with Philip Smith Ains.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you said, Mr. Chair, this is a long meeting today, so I'll try and make this pretty quick. Um, I just wanted to, uh, follow up on the planning session that we had last Tuesday. One of the big concerns that I heard was about, uh, vaccination information out to the public. And so as you heard from, Jason's update just a little bit ago, we have tried to address those, get more information out. Um, we're also working on, uh, revamping the coronavirus webpage because it has gotten uh, quite cluttered, uh, after this many months of, of dealing with COVID-19, uh, which leads into the next topic, which is the website and Brad Bowers is in the process of scheduling a meeting for our web committee to get that, um, project kicked off. Uh, one of the other things that we talked about was decreasing traffic in the city county building. And I'm happy to report that the, uh, Treasurer's Tag Office has their new online, uh, booking system, appointment booking system online and appointments officially start tomorrow. So that, uh, project has progressed. Um, expo improvements, we are getting a meeting scheduled to review the project manager, the budget for 2020. Um, we will be in front of the commissioners on February 9th to start kicking off that process. So following up on, um, those concerns that we heard from last week. Uh, the next item is, uh, swearing in for elected officials, official, uh, congratulations as of next Monday to, um, Commissioners Sparks and Vidrickson for their reelection. And so, uh, they, along with the other elected officials, will be sworn in next Monday, uh, up in courtroom 304. And we do not plan on, um, having a public, uh, presentation of that this year, uh, given everything that's going on with COVID. Uh, that of course means that, um, next Tuesday will be your commission's reorganizational meeting for 2021. So just wanted to remind everyone of that. Um, we will not be taking our customary pictures this year. Uh, typically we take a picture of the commission, uh, each, uh, reorganizational meeting. Um, but again, because, uh, it's hard to get a camera that takes pictures when you're six feet apart, we will, um, skip that and hope to reschedule that sometime this summer when we can all get back together. And finally, I've been advised that, um, the traditional local government day that the, um, League of Municipalities and KAC, uh, jointly host each year in Topeka, usually at the end of January, um, to inform legislators about local government issues. That is not going to be happening this, uh, this year, or at least not during the month of January, uh, in view of the pandemic in Topeka. So that is all that I wanted to update you on today and be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from other commissioners? Will we continue with Zoom meetings for a while? Now that Jason is, has, uh, continued all the, his things?
Um, yeah, so we will probably try and continue with Zoom meetings for a little bit, but we're going to explore moving, uh, to a different part of the Zoom platform, which we think might be a little bit more friendly for the public. And so Brad and I have, um, something scheduled for this week to, uh, do a test run and see if we can improve this. Uh, we will be getting out new Zoom information. Um, is part of the agenda for next Tuesday because the current Zoom only went through today.
All right. Any other questions, uh, from commissioners or comments? If not, thank you very much for your update, Phil. Uh, item number three is, uh, uh, commissioners comments. Does anybody have anything? Or announcements? Anyone have anything? Any new business that anyone wishes to discuss? That having been said, uh, I will declare today's meeting as being adjourned. Thank you for watching. Thank you for participating.